Hi, I'm calling this evening's public meeting to order, please. Do we have a motion?
Other side, yeah.
Thank you. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Work Session Meeting of October 6, 2022 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey, 07470. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Okay, we're gonna have flags lit, please, in a moment of silence. Flag.
Flag donations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bubba, are you with us?
Okay. Dr. Toga.
Mr. Bubba.
Thank you.
So now we have extensive presentations, so I'll keep my report brief. So October 2nd is Facility Workers' Recognition Day. I'd like to take a moment to thank and recognize all of our facility workers across the district. Our schools are extraordinarily clean and well-maintained, and our facilities are central, making each of our schools a great learning environment, as well as great places where students and staff take pride in their school. Tonight, we'll be spending a good amount of time discussing our facilities. We just wanted to take that moment to recognize the many contributions of our employees in the facilities department, including Peter Orban and Lauren Tibbetts, who served as our directors under new administrative structure for that department. And that structure has received great reviews from our school employees, especially our principals, who have had nothing but good things to say about this new structure. So three weeks ago, I shared a letter with the parent community that included information that they needed to opt their children out of lessons related to new health and safety standards. Since the opt-out option was shared with parents, we continue to see parents opting out. So as of this morning, we have a total of 446 students with parents who have opted them out of their classes, lessons. Basically, the total number of students based on the grade levels where the content will be delivered is 2,818 students. So at this point, we have about 15.8% of our students enrolled at grade levels where health and safety lessons will be delivered, who will not be participating. The other thing I wanted to report on is that the administration and partnership of the WA has been doing check-ins at all of our school buildings, so a little time to reconnect with the staff members. So Mrs. Reshner and I, along with an officer from the WA, are visiting each of our schools. We've been doing that, so we've already had, we have two visits down. And during that time, we talked about a number of significant issues related to what's happening in the school. We've learned some very important things that we've been able to act on to help with each of our schools, and so we're going to continue to do that over the next month and a half. And so, the PEP will visit all of our schools. So the other thing I have to do tonight is I have to provide the board and complete the mandatory report. It's called the SSDS, or the Student Safety Data System. So I have to read this kind of as it is, so I definitely read this statement. It's required. The semi-annual report under NJSI 18A17H46, incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons and substance abuse offenses, and harassment, intimidation, bullying, which took place in our schools during the period January 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2022. Now, just on a side note, I just wanted to mention that this reporting period is different. So if these numbers sound like they're a little bit larger than the other prior reporting period, it's because that only includes part of the school. So in other words, there's one reporting party, one reporting period that includes the summer months, July and August, right? And that reporting period is obviously, it's a, the numbers are usually lower because there's no school during that time period. But pursuant to statute, are required to report to the Board of Education two times per year at a public meeting all acts of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which occurred during the previous recording period. Tonight, reporting during the period from January 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2022, so six months. As reported to the New Jersey Department of Education through the Student Safety Data System, SSDS replaces the former Electronic Violence and Vandalism System. It also requires each school district to report more and different data than in the past. For example, all HIV investigations, both alleged and confirmed, must now be reported. In addition, all removals for disciplinary reasons must be reported for both general education and special education students. So the numbers being reported may appear higher in some instances than the totals reported in prior years. For that reason, it's tough to draw conclusions on any increases in reported totals due to the state requiring more information under the new SSDS system. Our schools continue to maintain an excellent record of investigation, documenting, recording, handling incidents in a timely and efficient manner. For report period two, January 1st through June 30th, 2022, throughout the district, there were incidents in total reported, 25 incidents of violence. This includes assaults, fights, and threats, and simple assaults. Zero incidents of vandalism, zero weapons offenses, 19 incidences of substance abuse that includes substance possession, suspected substance possession, refused exams, use confirmed or sale and distribution, 84 general code of conduct incidents, which leads to educational removal, so in other words, suspensions, and 46 confirmed incidents of HIV out of a total of 112 investigated alleged HIV cases for the second reporting period of the year. The 46 confirmed HIV cases involve the categories of race, that's 13, ancestry, ancestry and national origin, one, religion, three, gender, six, sexual orientation, seven, power imbalance, seven, disability or other, three, and distinguishing characteristics of students, six. Each of these was invested by a school-level anti-bullying specialist with guidance and support by principals and the district anti-bullying coordinator. Consequences of remediation efforts for offending students included individual counseling, student or parent conferences, and discipline in accordance with district code of conduct, immediate measures for targeted students, including counseling, support services, parent conferences, schedule changes, stay away of humans, teacher aid monitors during the school day, adult-student pairings, and other monitoring measures. In addition, each school has instituted program, including the district-wide initiative, No Place for Hate, intended to reduce bullying and improve the school climate. Also, for our HIV report, there have been eight incidents of HIV investigated since the last report, and one of those, I'm sorry, five of those cases were deemed to meet the actual criteria of an HIV incident. The other thing I'd like to add is for our next meeting, we're gonna do our HIV grades. So we're gonna basically share with the community our scores and our grades for each of our school's efforts in the prior year based on self-assessment that's completed at each school. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we have a referendum presentation, planning update this evening.
That's gonna be me, and Lauren, if you can queue it up if it's ready to go. And while she's doing that, I think we'll probably start maybe sitting down, because there's a lot of professionals in the room right now, that are hiding behind us. So what I'll do, she's already, has it up, that was quick, thank you, I'll do some quick introductions. That's Lauren Tibbetts, facility director, administrative side, Andrea Khan from On the Panamin Scotland and Belmont, John Carton, Paris Samjin, and Steve Collel. A lot of you may know from the ride around, right? So, Steve.
The wheels on the bus.
What we wanted to do is kind of go over where we were, where we are, and where we're headed towards. So there are some decisions that will happen to be tangled with as we move forward. If you see here, you'll see some processes, overview process. We're gonna go over an update on the project as we ran through the schools and tabulated them in your presentations. We gave you a physical copy of them at your place there. But we wanted to at least remind you where we were, right? So if we go to the next slide. I was here long enough in the sense that I came in when it was an arts and athletic issue, I guess way back in 2018, and it kind of rolled into a discussion with the board from, say, January to March of 2019, and then we all kind of had another issue to deal with, which was COVID-19. So it kind of was put on hold for a while, and now we're back to it. As you all know, we had some discussion in December 2021, an org treat. At that point, we were concerned about some developments in the community and that impact on our school facilities. We also identified an architectural report that we would look at all of our facilities across the board, updating from 2019 to kind of reminding everybody at that time where we were with the arts and athletic piece, as well as some of our needs as far as long-range facility plan, right? Excuse me, right? So February, April, you know, obviously, we're starting to talk about a referendum, but we started acquainting some new board members to some of our sites. Some others that were familiar wanted to see the conditions they were in. So we did go through each site with a team of administrators that met by many school principals in the field and some of the team members here tonight. So we did that. We did report out also with PWS items, right? We had a series of three mini seminars, if I could call it, bringing us, Laura Bishop was here, discussed about the communications plan. We had John Carton, myself, and others present, you know, an overview on some of the needs at that point in time. And then we had, we had a woman that's not here tonight, Robbie Akempora, who's with Phoenix Advisors, also gave us some financial information at the time. So that kind of edged out that three-part series. Then we ran into a June 22 org treat where we again addressed a lot of these same issues. At this time, we were trying to drill down to get a better direction. I think we did come out, and we'll hit another slide in a minute. But also, part of the summer in June, after June, we were in the process of getting our professionals all on board. So a lot of the contract approvals, appointments over the summer transpired with Andrea Khan joining us at the last meeting, so we approved her appointment. So she was the last individual through our team, so we're raring to go. So we go to the next page, potential referendum. Now, these were pretty much the takeaways that were recorded from the retreat. Again, it's the June board retreat. There was a discussion about a $50 million portion to replace existing debt that was falling off, and they were really gonna be targeted, that $50 million, to high priority facility projects that we had. Again, based on our inspections at various sites, we developed a pretty comprehensive summary off of the long-range facility plan, which was last updated, I think, 2019. We also discussed a potential additional amount on top of the $50 million for the high priority projects, which is number two, which is a $25 million dollar amount that was targeted. Again, I think it made probably a little bit more than 25, I think it was more range, but we can talk about that a little bit later. But these were for other educational-type priorities that we had. We were talking about athletic fields, we were talking about potential expansion again for enrollment. And then we decided on number three, the other thing was to continue to review the long-range facility plan, right? So we knew at that time that not only do we have to continue to update the long-range facility plan, that is something down the line that the Department of Education is gonna require as we go through and get projects approved one by one. So that was something we were aware of. We were also talking about different timelines, communication side of it, also submissions to the Department of Education Facility Review, and we're also looking at election calendar options where, which is basically when you wanted to hold a referendum. Number five was also discussed to a degree as far as how to create the question. Again, I think the discussion focused on maybe a two-question or two-part, where you had $50 million in position A, and then if that was approved, you would add on the additional amount, which would be that 25-plus number on top of, which would be the additional debt that would be incurred. And then, like I said before, and then we were running off, getting the professionals, you know, on board. So part of the process, right, for me, is because I was, of course, really stressed out over the financial side of it. The first question on the financial, yeah, is the creation of the maintenance reserve and the capital reserve, right? Those are two big things that really the board has implemented the past few years, and we're utilizing them. So the idea was, can we project a little bit with the idea that we continue to generate some surplus to maybe absorb some of these high priority projects that might be too emergent to be included in a referendum down the line in a year, or two, or three? And we were also looking at maintenance items that could also be emerging or emergency situations, we want to continue to maintain that. So I sit down on the other professional in the room that's hidden in the corner, Cheryl Leiting, Assistant VA. And that's, our task is to try to see what we're ending as of June and where that's gonna bring us, not only this year we're in, but also another couple of years out. So we did that, so identified certain programs. I'll say the first one was, we knew we had to do some bathroom upgrades at a couple of our elementary schools, so we provided a program for that, so we made a kind of, yeah, we, so we're gonna, we're really earmarking that for the capital reserve. We want to continue, I know that was a board-driven program as well, well before I came on board, was the Next Generation Science Lab, so that commitment was still with us, so that was projected into the future. And then there was discussions on bleachers, right? We were talking about maybe dividing the bleachers out and then doing athletic buildings separately. And so the idea was, at the time, was maybe there's room in this capital reserve where we can maybe chisel away at both bleacher projects and have that out of capital reserve. And these are some estimates we were taking into consideration for the capital reserve. Maintenance reserves, again, we've been looking at our roofs, we have some roofs that need to be dealt with. So we currently have a list that we're working from, and the next three that we had identified that we wanted to make sure we had some funds available in maintenance was TD roofs, APT roofs, and Ryerson roofs, right? So that's something that we already know we had to tangle with, so that was part of our analysis, as well as needed heating and ventilation repairs and upgrades that have come into fruition. I guess at this stage, they're more clearly an issue that we have to deal with through the maintenance reserve. But the other item that we had to be sensitive to was, we have a maintenance reserve for things that are unexpected, so we definitely want to maintain some of that reserve for things that we don't see right at the moment, but maybe coming at us as an emergency. So we wanted to continue to do that, because that does help us absorb some of those projects without hitting the operating budget, which is the sensitivity. So moving on from that, so once we decided where we, where we kind of stood with the financial condition moving forward, we continued on with the long-range facility plan. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Lauren to kind of walk us through, along with our architects, kind of where we are at, on a summary basis, on all our projects. What I'll lead up to is that some of, there's a lot of columns, I guess as financial people, we have a lot of columns on our spreadsheet, so we kind of hit a few, and on the right side, there's past two. So we've already been through this over and over again a few times, but I'll let Lauren take some here for this section.
So the items identified are a product of the long-range facility plan that was done in 2019, as well as recent walkthroughs throughout the district and each school, with the facilities department, with the architects, with principals, other administrators, to review the conditions of the buildings and get a clearer picture on what we need to do as far as maintenance, not only necessarily, and mostly focused on maintenance and some improvements. So what we have is, in each school, we work through each of the, taking the high priorities. So in the next few pages that are, I think John will address some of the, what we discussed is broken down by each individual school. We tried to, and our intent was to provide some work or some outline for work in each school throughout the district.
Yeah, they became priorities within each of the schools from all the different stakeholders when we walked the sites and evaluated with Lauren and her team. And the, and we also looked at them in the context of debt service aid as well. So which projects would maximize your debt service aid? The budgets were obtained from the 2019 long-range facility plan. So what we're gonna do next is revisit and assess each of these projects and give them more up-to-date budgets. So that's what our next step is to do over the next month or so. I don't know if you want to go down each and every line item, but if there's any questions. There's actually one of the projects which was at Wayne Hills, was a newer priority, which was the, not the sewer pipe, but in the kitchen, the kitchen pipe that's underground. So that's gonna have to have a little bit more evaluations to move forward, so as one example.
And just, so you know, as far as a strategy to, you know, get approvals from the Department of Education, you know, John and I had, and Lauren had a long conversation on how best to do that. So the idea was, you know, even if we down the line change the numbers, meaning maybe reduce it or maybe substitute projects, we'll have to eventually go to the department with really a project by school, right?
Yeah, each, each school gets its own application. So if the board decides, whatever the projects are in each of those schools, these are a definite priority, that goes in an application. If there's a project or two that you're hesitant on, we could do a separate application for that project or two per school, because what you don't want to do is get down the line and you're in approval already, and, oh, you know, we don't want to do that project anymore. Well, it's too late, you'd have to remove the whole application and resubmit. So if there's a few, you have to be sure of these particular application, you know, projects per application, but if there's a, like I said, a project or two or three that you're unsure of, we'll pull that out, and if you want to not execute that down the road, that's an easy, just pull it out, you know, no harm, no foul.
You have two questions, Harry? Harry has a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
That's okay. So looking quickly at these items, I only see a building addition for Freakness Early Childhood Development Center, so there's no other additions planned?
No, and that, and that addition is for handicapped accessibility, which is, which is a debt service aid covered. It's not at the same rate, it's at $143 a square foot, it's not at the maximum 40%. And that's just for a lobby and the elevator itself.
Right, so there's two portions, right? We'll get to this, the third page, I don't know if you, yeah, you have it up now. So you have the shell, right? Because that was one of our concerns, because there's about eight classrooms at Freakness that are not used for educational space at the moment, right? The other portion, we use it for early childhood, so the idea was to bring that online and be prepared in event we do have an increase in enrollment at the lower grades, but also in event that we want to expand like any other program we may have internally, like our early childhood program specifically, or if we wanted to offer another special aid or specialized program at that site. But by bringing that online, not only does it stabilize the whole building, but also really will bring on those additional classroom spaces. So we split it in two. So the idea was, this is what we can do now, get ready, and then if we get hit with a bigger down the line, the demographics show that we have an influx of students at the K5 or pre-K5, we would then, that would be that second question that you have, and that's kind of the way we were planning, and that's that little section below there, where you have a wing, which is kind of a mirror of the existing area where the early childhood center is, and we would just push it out and almost look the same. I think capacity off the top of my head is partially at 200 additional students.
I think that's about right, yeah.
With the idea that you would bring that into a K5 site.
Mrs. Kazan?
Couple things. I don't know, maybe my memory is failing me, and that's not unusual, but I thought we had decided that we were going to entertain some of the additions at these schools to handle the influx of the new students, and that we would prioritize those in addition to some of these upgrades that are necessary infrastructure-wise in order to maximize our return on investment from the state. I'm not sure how much of that money we'll get for these types of projects, because it's not delineated here. So I thought that was what we had concluded in our retreat. So I'm a little confused as to why the sport fieldhouse is around here. I also was under the impression that running plumbing out to the hills area specifically was gonna be an issue, so putting locker rooms out there, I thought was off the table.
Well, this, okay, there are two things, that's why we're talking tonight, right? So that we can get further clarification. There are certain things that we are aware, we're trying to get to a number, right? So the project was to try to get to a range around 50 million, right? Which, as you can see right now, we're almost there, we're gonna refine it, with the idea that we can substitute things in, because we do know that there are three schools that also, through our walkthrough, would love to have like gym spaces, large group spaces, I don't remember them off the top of my head.
JFK, APT, Ransell, Carter, and Ryerson were the other schools that, where additions were proposed.
So, and the idea too is, as we update our demographic study, we'll get to see if that, if that's gonna be an issue, and it may be an issue where we're gonna have to switch gears, so that's why we're going through this, because that's what the issue.
Well, my main clarification is, if we need to put in those projects, those are the ones that we get the maximum return on versus repair-type projects with what.
No, it's just the opposite.
Either way around.
Yeah, the cross, we've been talking about each individual project would be submitted, and we will be told by the department what will be eligible.
Correct. What was that answer? You were gonna answer my question?
Debt, debt service aid is maximized on maintenance and capital projects, HVAC, and handicapped accessible. Additions are, the maximum you could get is $143 per square foot of whatever the value is.
Versus.
Whatever the cost is.
Whatever, yeah.
So.
Versus up to 40% of return on a.
On a maintenance project.
On a, mainly.
Which could be money, yeah.
Now, I'm saying up to, I'm not sure what they would get here.
Yeah, just real quick, the way debt service aid works now is, all of the costs of the rehab work related to educational adequacy, health and safety, code requirements, basically repairs, your existing buildings, major repairs to your existing buildings will be all eligible, so it will count. But the new construction, the first thing they have to do is figure out how many quote-unquote unhoused students you have, and that's a term of art. And basically, what the state did when they created this law is they created an ideal model of what a school, how many square feet a school should have per grade level of instruction for each child. And then they figure out how many, based upon your current configurations, and how many kids you will have in your most recent demographic study, they'll determine whether you have any unhoused students. And then, when they, you build square feet, they'll tell you the maximum amount of square feet you can build, that you'll get anything for, and then they'll give you $143 a square foot for every square foot you build within that maximum amount. So you get more money for rehab work than you get for new construction.
Thank you.
And the only other thing that I'm a little, you know, concerned about is when they do the demographics. I mean, good planning says you look down the road and you see what's coming in. Unfortunately, the DOE kind of looks at what you have rather than what's coming. So, yeah, I'm not sure that future development will necess, they almost make you get overcrowded before you can.
Oh, I like.
If you want their money.
If you want their money, right.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you want to go back to slide, if you have any questions on the grid. I know I gave this to you, you can go home and bring it with you, and if you have questions, you can definitely address them moving forward. But I can press on to the presentation slide. Because, okay, so the next slide is tentative timeline. Now, we, the kind of work I noticed some discussion about what is the best time to go out for a referendum? I know we have professionals that can definitely weigh in on it. We've been, for really planning purposes, we decided just to go with September right now, just so that we would, it was a little bit earlier than the other options, so we wanted to make sure that we were ahead of schedule, really more ahead of schedule than behind schedule, so. And went to the Department of Education, it seemed like they're stretching their timelines anyway, so it's, it might, it's prudent. So, so John, if you want to maybe go down through the September dates and then what type of milestones you have?
Yeah, September 2024. And was that, is that rolling off? Is that part of this?
It is actually rolling off in that same fiscal year. So if you have a September of 2024 referendum, and we issued the bonds before the end of the year, which would be ideal, because then you would be in the state's budget for getting debt service aid on this issue for the following year, I would suggest you have the bonds mature within that year, so before the end of June, which actually may work in your favor, because you would decrease the amount of interest. If your first principal was in five, six months, you're gonna have less interest in that particular year, so you'll be able to levelize some of the impact of that debt service from that issue.
So with that, that's where September came in as the one we were kind of focusing in on. So you can see, it's the September referendum, it would be the last Tuesday of the month, which is the 24th, and that, and then basically you go backwards from there based on the days in the left-hand column. So the 120 days for the referendum vote. So the 120 days for the referendum vote. And when we were talking to Andrea, I don't know if you want to explain where that came to get back to.
Originally, the state always advised us to file our applications five months ahead of time. Because by law, they're required to get back to us within 90 days. But they can't because they're tremendously short-staffed. And who knows what they'll be a year from now. But they've been tremendously short-staffed for the last year or two. So it's just taking longer. And what happens, and of course, we had the pandemic and people weren't in the buildings and the whole sorts of delays. But they take the position that the application has to be complete. So as long as they're still asking for information, they may not deem it complete. We can't fight with them on it. So we want to allow them as much time as possible. It used to be 90 days. We would file those applications prior to when we have to give notice to the county. We have to give notice to the county of a special election date 60 days ahead of time. Ideally, we would also provide them with the bond question. For a special election, actually, we have a little bit more latitude. Statute's sort of inconsistent there. It says that we have to get to the county question at least 18 days prior to it. But it's just not enough time. It's not enough time for you to do your public information. It's not enough time for them to do any translations that they need to do and get the vote-by-mail applications out and done and the sample ballots done. So ideally, it's around 60 days. Now, were you to put a question on at your general election, then you absolutely must get the question to them at least 60 days prior to the general election. So that's where we got the basic timetables. But John moved up the date where we're going to project to file the applications so that we give them plenty of time and we don't have to worry about it.
There'll be plenty of time to plan between now and then.
All right, so the next slide is just a reform. I think you've seen it a few times. We updated it because the rate, the rate kind of changed. I think the last time we were out, it was like three and a half. So now it's 3.5, I'm sorry, 4.5. So we updated it and I don't know if you can go over that.
Yeah.
Well, we wanted to make, yeah, what we wanted to do is when we showed you last time, we had, we keep talking about 50 million. So we wanted to make sure we had 50 million. And then there's different discussions about, because if you remember, we use, I think it was 13.6% eligible, right? That was what we were going to get back from state aid, right? Because there's a lot of additional projects that were not eligible. So we reduced that amount. But after we reviewed what we had to this point, we felt it was probably good time to discuss the impact of more eligible projects, right? Because the, like the, in this case, we removed the athletic buildings, which wouldn't be eligible. So that was a big change. So we did a 25% scenario and a 30% state aid assumption. Again, these are all assumptions. There's obviously going to change by the time we go out for the bond. It could go up, it could go down. But we want to at least also throw a couple scenarios at you about the percentage.
Yeah, and that's exactly right. Some of the assumptions changed, basically. And I think that they're still somewhat conservative. Of course, it still depends upon what you're going to actually do. So if you're moving some of the new construction out and you're doing more of the rehab in, more of the rehab will be eligible. I think that the debt service aid estimate can increase. So we asked the financial advisors, Phoenix advisors, to rerun it. And they reran it with a 25 and a 30% debt service aid. Now, the reason we did that, there's a possibility almost all of the rehab work, and most of its rehab work, almost all of it will be eligible. So that means it's counted in the formula. But for the past 12 years, the state has been underfunding debt service aid by 15%. So if all of your work was rehab work and all of it was eligible, and this is a district that the district aid percentage is going to be deemed to be 50% because anything that's less is deemed to be, I'm sorry, 40%. If that were the case, you would be getting 34% of the cost as being eligible for aid and fit within their formula. So we figured it was safe to move up that 13%. That was originally based, I think, on the athletic stadiums being included. And I think that the athletic stadiums wouldn't be included at all because stadiums are not eligible for debt service aid. They're not eligible costs in the statute. So we had to run it one at 25% and one at 30% debt service aid. And the average cost to the house would be relatively level. Now, by putting together our applications so that some of your lower priority things are in a separate application, if it came in and the debt service aid were a little lower or the interest rates were a little higher, we'd be able to peel those back. And you could make a decision whether you wanted to present them as part of that first question, part of a second question, or perhaps not at all and do it in some other fashion. So that was how we decided to do it. Now, the question that she provided, let me just see.
This, the first column would be the replacement, right? So the 50 would be, yeah, so the 50 million is that first question.
Yep.
And that first question would be to replace the existing debt. And then what we've done in the past, and I think since we did questions on, you know, if we added a million or subtract a million, what would be the, you know, the additional amounts? And that's why we kind of did the $5 million increments and a million dollar increments, just to get, if someone wanted to do some quick calculations. But yes, to answer your question, that first column is the 50 million would be to replace the debt. If the existing asset falls off, this would replace it. With the idea that anything, on the second question, if that passed on top of this, that would be a separate increase and beyond this amount.
So this is just examining that first question alone. And the average tax impact is actually less than the tax impact of the debt that's falling off. But because there's a requirement that no later principal payment can exceed any prior principal payment by more than 100%, the first couple of years are usually your highest. So what you may, one of the things we can do is work to try to minimize that as much as we can. But you can't completely. It's not like you can have a level debt service, like in your mortgage, where every year you pay basically the same amount of principal and interest. In the beginning, you pay more interest, like, you know, and at the end, you pay more principal, but not nearly as much as a back-loaded mortgage payment would be. So we can struggle to reduce those first few years a little bit, especially if we have less than a full year of interest in that very first year. That might help the impact on that first year. The second year may still go up because we have a full year of principal and interest. But at least we have paid down some of the principal. So when, at the end of the day, when we get to that, we'll work with trying to levelize that as much as possible. So I think that, you know, the 30%, there's a good chance if most of the work is rehab work, I did see some paving in there. I don't know, the only things I could think of that might not be eligible is sometimes some of the paving isn't, but sometimes it is. It depends on how they see it, so.
The rework.
Yeah.
Not creativity.
But I would think that most of the rehab work would be eligible. And then depending on what the demographic report comes back at, we would be able to determine whether any of the space or all of the space is eligible. And then, of course, it would be at the reduced amount.
Go to the next slide.
Excuse me. Mr. Chrisakos has a question.
I know it's subject to change, but do you know the date when Phoenix advisors came up with these indicative?
Yesterday. Yeah. The earlier ones, they used a 3.5%. Now they're using a 4.5%. Of course, the actual rate of interest is determined at competitive sale and it's not for a couple of years off. So it doesn't necessarily mean it will be higher because just a year ago, it was like half of this. It was unbelievable. And, you know, we just don't know what the future holds, obviously. But we've lived through a lot of times where we thought we were in a rising interest rate market and then it didn't. Or it didn't go up much. Or it didn't go up at all and went down. So it's been all over the place in the last couple of years. We have a recession, it could go down. So we don't know. And then you would have that flexibility to peel some of those projects off if you felt that you wanted to have a tax-neutral impact with your bond issue.
Mrs. Kazan? We always have the option to refund at lower interest rates down there?
Yes, these bonds would be callable. And the way we usually do school district bonds, actually, the way we do all bonds nowadays is what we call hard call with no call premium. So even if you issued 20-year bonds and in 10 years, interest rates were exactly the same, the fact that they're only going to be financed for 10 years would reduce it. So, yeah, you would have that option to refund the bonds and save interest.
Any other questions?
Next slide was, we wanted to give you, since Mrs. Bishop shared this, I just wanted us to have an idea of a communications plan and what that would look like on timeline with that September date. So we wanted to have at least a look at this. And that would be something, again, these are decisions. And we would obviously form the communication plan once we nailed down, you know, the amount that we have, the type of projects and those type of things. So that would be all part of the comprehensive communication plan. So I just wanted to share that with you. And then the next steps, really, where we are right now and what we're going to need some guidance moving forward is really decide on the size and structure, right? We kind of expressed what we're working with. So we would like to refine that and confirm what our educational priorities are. If there are things that we wanted to add beyond just high priorities, I know that's, we're still working on that. If there are things that weren't a part of this that we need to continue to discuss, we'll definitely take that back. Or not today, but, you know, in the near future. And then we would be able to move forward with our project submissions. Four is just decide on referendum date. We have some time with that. I know we also have time on how we want to word it. If it's a two-part question, Andrea definitely can go and address that. But that doesn't need to be really made right now. It's just really size and structure that we need and then confirmation of priorities. So the idea is in November, presenting to the student superintendent and the president, you know, some sort of guiding resolution just to help us continue to plan so that we're heading in the right direction. And then I think we're open for questions? If there's any that we haven't already addressed?
Mr. Chrisakos?
So I'm a little confused because I felt when we were rushing to get these walkthroughs done and everything, that we were planning on a 2023 bond referendum. Here we have a 2024. We have costs that, correct me if I'm wrong, have changed since our original walkthroughs. The potential of everything to rise on these costs and misleading the taxpayer, what we could honestly get done by 2024. Because it's going to, it could potentially be less work here that's getting done with the rising costs and with the bond, the cost of the bond. I thought we were rushing to get this done for 2023 and now we're talking almost two years from now.
Well, I mean, is the 2023 September doable?
Not September 2023, no, not at this point.
I, I, I mean, I think we're going to have to go back and take a look at all these costs again and project out potentially to 2024. Because there might be projects that aren't going to be feasible to get done then.
That could be the ultimate decision of the board. This is a board issue. We're here to address any concerns you have. We'll go back, I mean, as a group, we can continue to discuss some of the priorities.
So the original concept, and so the administration moved ahead with the idea of, okay, spring 2023 is really our target. However, we found out at that point that we were unable to go ahead with the vote in the spring of 2023 because of our November elections. I mean, that was the initial one. So there's no way that we could do that spring vote. So that's when that kind of, it was no longer an option. There's no way we could do it before. So now we're talking at least the following year.
I thought September, so fall of 2023, that's where I, that's where I was being led to believe when we started talking about this in December 2021.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you. I want to rush this as soon as we can because you're right, we are wasting time. And we want to make sure that we get moving on these decisions so that we can have some sort of better information as we refine all this information. So in that sense, we, in my opinion, like we tried to address as soon as we found out we wanted to head this direction after COVID. I mean, you talk to some militaries like me, I would, you know, before COVID, I would love to, but we're here now and we still could take advantage of the fall off in the tax rate, right? So you have that replacement and that's still an option for us to replace that. It's not like we've lost time related to that. So we definitely have time to replace it. So it's not like the opportunity has escaped us.
Mr. Chrisakos?
I know we previously said we're going to bring the demographer back due to the rise in enrollment. So what is the timing on that?
So typically, a demographer is not going to really, it wouldn't be beneficial to do that now because they do rely on our October 15th camp, which is really completed on the 1st of November. That's when that information is submitted, gathered, and sent to the Department of Ed. So it would have to be at least after November. Where, you know, we would basically add that together, give that to the demographer, look at all the other, you know, new enrollment and maybe some other factors. And then hopefully by around the same time when we had it last year, maybe December, January, we would have a new demographic study. Yeah, because I think what's on all the residents' minds is the proposed additions or the additional increase in population, mostly on the hillside. So I think, you know, having that demographer come out again would help us decide on putting additions in here. That would also perhaps have some indicate, would that also be part of a calculation for unhoused students?
Yes.
So far, demographics studies have changed significantly. And that's really a key thing here. Because we may very well see with a revised demographic study a significant number of unhoused students.
Is there money available through the state for new project? Because it appears to me that it's, we're talking remediation. But what about SBA?
New buildings?
Yeah, there is. Rod school districts, regular operating school districts, continued always to get debt service aid. When they first enacted the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act, there was a choice between getting grant money or getting debt service aid. Actually, the debt service aid is kind of more reliable than the grants were because you had to keep applying to get your grant money back and it was becoming a problem. But that money was funded by a state bond issue, which has essentially been depleted. In the last budget for the state, the state did come up with some additional funding. A lot of it was for the SDA districts. And some of it is available for the VOD districts. But the, it's not as much. And it's not clear how it's going to be distributed. It may well be distributed for capital outlet or capital reserve projects or current year projects. Or perhaps they will let us use it as part of a bond issue. But that's just not clear right now.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One other thing I could mention to you in your planning is if you plan to use capital reserve for some projects that aren't eligible for aid, if you put it in the bond proposal, a lot of people say, we're going to use our capital reserve so that we can lower the sticker shock, you know, not having that large number of an appropriation. But if you do have other sources of money, the bond question is supposed to identify them. So the question would read something, we're going to appropriate $50 million, including $5 million from capital reserve and authorize the issuance of $45 million in bonds. Well, the $50 million in projects will count as eligible costs. So even though you only issue the $45 million in debt, so it actually increases the ratio and the amount of debt service reserve, debt service aid that you'll receive. So you can think about that as you plan what you're going to do with capital reserve. What some districts do is they use their capital reserve money for the projects that receive no aid or less aid.
Mrs. Kazan? Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on Mr. Matal's concern. So, okay, September 2024. Tell me again why January and March were up the table of 2024.
It's not the table.
Anybody?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's rhetorical because it isn't on the table. I mean, if there are other options that you would like. I mean, if there are other options that you would like to follow.
We should have a special meeting, I think.
We can move it according to his schedule.
Does the board have another special meeting to discuss this more thoroughly because it's a lot to take in for tonight? Just my two cents.
Our goal for tonight was really to get the discussion going again because it has been stagnant and the start of school year, a lot of things going on. So the conversation dropped off and we wanted to make sure it's fresh in the minds of board members because we would like to move ahead.
I stopped being able to read lips.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Like to move on with the rest of our agenda, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're amazingly thorough. In case we have questions from the public, because this is an agenda item and those can be, we will ask questions when you come up to the podium. Perhaps we can address those earlier in the evening.
Can I answer, Gary, you just heard the public?
Yes.
Sure.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for staying. Okay. Mr. Moffett, revisions to agenda items only, please.
We want tonight under emergency T, human resources. That'll be T3, approval of additional compensation. We're going to pull number two, A and D, Title I program coordinators tonight. And that's the only change to the agenda.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. So if you would like to ask a question regarding the presentation this evening, please feel free and we'll try to get you an answer during this time period. Thank you. Would anyone like to speak? Step up to the podium.
I'll move.
Just a quick question. This is only covering emergency repairs and so on as well, so there's nothing in here for better AC and the other things that maybe we've been waiting a while for in a number of the schools?
There are mechanical controls.
Okay.
Yeah, for HVAC.
Okay, so that'll cover a number of the schools for?
I believe it's line item in every single school.
Okay, not just dealing with the maintenance of them, but also upgrading them?
Oh, upgrading, yeah. Replacing.
If I can, it doesn't put air conditioning in all of our schools. That's what the question really is. Yeah, that is in here. This is a repair of existing systems currently designed with the facility.
Okay.
So if there's existing air conditioning?
Rooms without air conditioning now would continue not to have air conditioning in 2024, 2025, 2026?
Right.
Under this proposal?
These are, right now, what's discussed this evening, they were all basically repairs and upgrades of existing systems. And that would be part A of this question.
Yeah.
And there's no additional brand-new HVAC in two either in question number two.
None, nothing in two.
Not at this point. I mean, it can change.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, I'll move to close.
Second. Thank you. Thank you.
That was it?
Thank you.
Good to meet you. Very informative.
We have committee reports. Thank you. Mrs. Kumar?
I have two committee reports. My first committee report is for Communications Committee. We met tonight with Ms. Padap, Ms. Wintec, Dr. Toback in attendance. We went over recent media coverage, high school and middle school publications team. We discussed some PCTI parent focus groups and the overall marketing of our high schools along with the niche.com ratings. And that concludes my report for Communications Committee for tonight. We also did look at the minutes from prior. Tonight, the Education Committee met, myself, Ms. Padap, Ms. Wintec were in attendance and Ms. Reichman was the administrator in attendance, along with Mr. Mignelli. We went over the September 8th Education Committee minutes. We went over a new special ed goal and looking at our assessment for the community and for our schools. We went over our dual agreement with our new community college. And we also reviewed the eighth grade trip and options being considered for that with all of the current restraints in place. That concludes my report for Education Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Prasakos? Sorry.
Tonight, the Technology and Safety Committee met. It was Dr. Joe Worsher and myself. We discussed the Chromebook repair policy. The district will send out a reminder to parents about the importance for students to take good care of their Chromebook and the costs for repairs to Chromebooks that are broken as a result of negligent or deliberate damage are going to be $30. We had a security camera update. All new cameras have been installed in the district buildings. We discussed the learning management system. There was a district, there was a committee that was formed by the district to review the goal number four. The goal is to enhance the learning experience by identifying a learning management system for the development, implementation, and delivery of our educational programs and courses. That was it.
Thank you. Mrs. Kazan? Save the best for last.
Oh, yeah, sure. Well, I have two reports as well. On October 3rd, the Policy Committee met. It was myself, Mr. Fetal, Mrs. Wenting. We were joined by Paul Clark, Director of HR, and we had two special guests, the WTAA Union President, Mr. Crowley, and the WEA President, Ms. Pronte. The policy we discussed was, it's a combo policy, 3216, 4216, which covers all staff members' dressing rooming. We came to some conclusions on modifying those based on the discussions we had with those that are subjected to the policy and those who have to enforce the policy. It was a great discussion, I have to say. Sometimes it's best to just listen and come to an agreement that everybody can live with, and I think we did that. It's being written, it's not final. We'll get a copy of it as a group and we'll put it on the next PWS agenda when it's finalized and you'll get to see what we came up with. We tabled two other policies for a future meeting. Today, Finance Committee met with myself, Mr. Fetal, Mr. Moffett, Mrs. Leidig, Mr. Kablek, because I'm able to attend. We discussed the agenda items, the financial reports, which are basically, I can't think of the word. No, I'll move on. They happen at every meeting. They're not unusual. We discussed the contracts on tonight's agenda and got into specifically questions about the special ed assessment contract. We went over the transportation contracts and an update on the current bid that's out for landscaping, which is due back from November 2nd. We had an office update for vacancies that have been on the agenda for a while and one for resignation, one for the unfortunate passing of one of our employees. So far, they have one replacement and are working on another and there'll be some shuffling around, moving people up into positions. We also discussed the upcoming employee health benefit increase. This is something we planned ahead for, basically because we knew that since we're on a fiscal year and they're on a calendar year, that there would be an increase in January. So obviously, there was some planning for that. The month of October is open enrollment, so until we know how many people are coming in or going out, we don't have an exact number. But again, the budget has been built in such a way to handle this and we'll have final numbers for that mid-November. We discussed the senior center or community center that's over by Schuyler. It's time to renegotiate their rent and those are our seniors, so needless to say, I won't discuss it because it's a contract negotiation, but that's on the table for now. And the audit is beginning now. And Mr. Moffett will have his numbers on maintenance and capital reserve. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Okay.
Profoundry. That's the word.
Profoundry, okay. That's our word of the evening. Okay, we have action on agenda. Have a mover, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. Second?
The whole agenda.
Yes, the entire agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Yes, so item U8, RIA 513 regulation, I think there was going to be some revision to the language there.
You know what? We have the Chromebook policy, which addresses that. So there was further discussion after, the afternoon was not very busy, that the Chromebook policy addresses that and we should probably just leave it alone because it seemed redundant.
Yes, Mrs. Kazan?
I want to talk about the firm we hired to do the special education assessment job. It was a little confusing to me, the way it's written, the contract. Well, first of all, are there many firms that even do this type of work? Were there other firms considered besides this one?
I don't think so, no.
There are individuals, like retired LCC, child study team individuals who do it, but not many firms.
Well, because it wasn't a bid type item, I was just, you know, concerned about how they were vetted and what led you to decide that this was the best firm for the job, if I may?
Sure. Individually, we were able to meet different employees from the firm at different conferences that we attended and were able to learn about their work, be able to see presentations. So just being impressed with the resumes and backgrounds, people who had significant experience working in schools, not just in New Jersey, but around the country, varied roles as child study team members, as specialized teachers, as solution providers. It was a very comprehensive staff and group of people and just in conversation with them and them willing to come out and take the time to actually sit down with our Director of Student Support Services and look at all our needs and present to us what their deliverables would look like. They're committed to significant time in the district, two employees who are coming in, visiting all of our programs. So visiting all of our programs, looking at our IEs, speaking with a number of different employees, teachers, paraprofessionals, related service providers, just to gauge.
Pretending C tag meetings, understanding from a parent perspective, service, required meetings, events.
And just gauging overall satisfaction in the work environment and support that they're being given, where there are any gaps. Do we need to address additional training needs? Not all jobs are created equal. The student demographic in some classes requires significant training and we've lost staff members, so we want to make sure that we're adequately supporting students. We also know that we have a large preschool population that's being assessed right now. We're almost at capacity. We're anticipating between 30 and 40 new students coming this way, so we have to prepare for additional programs.
This year.
This year.
This year.
Mid-year. We want to make sure that we're projecting what our needs look like. And we also have new programs this year. We have two at Kakadak, two LLC classes, LLC severe for the K12 population. We have to plan for what this looks like for the next phase, so it's a lot to assess.
So that was my next question. The assessment of needs based on planned regional development, that's kind of a demographer-type item? I was just wondering if we even needed that because we're not.
Well, the understanding is basically if our programs continue to grow, certain decisions will need to be made about how, based on what we plan on doing, motivations and things like that, how many classrooms will we need in the future? And so that is part of it. So I would think that that would also be, as we look to the future, we plan for additional construction in the community in terms of housing. We should look to the future.
Well, I'm asking this also so that the community can hear it. I want them to understand just how thorough this is going to be.
So we were actually able to speak with a number of the employees and that have people who we were able to connect with, who had backgrounds and things that we're really trying to assess here. So we wanted people who worked in schools, special ed background, working with teachers, working with staff members and actually doing the work themselves. It brought a different level of understanding.
Excuse me. Thank you. Mrs. Pronte, don't we have funding for this?
Yes. So this is also something.
Yes, of course.
This is a good question.
Oh, yeah? Well, we have the additional funding, the American Rescue Plan Money, the SRF funds. There have been a number of increased specialized costs. Yeah, so this was all built in. We knew we needed to develop a goal to really assess what the needs are. And this was built into the goal. There were title funds that were associated and then connected to this.
It's a little under the budget we hoped for.
I think a lot of it.
It's like we got the ambassador discount. Thank you so much.
Three more questions? So to move the full agenda, roll call. Mr. Moffett?
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintec?
Yes.
Mr. Fetal?
Yes.
Mrs. Padap?
Yes.
Marc Caris?
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under old business. Thank you. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Any speakers? Please come to the podium.
Hello. Alan Tempesky, 41 Gibbs Drive, Wayne. On September 23, 21, young Nicholas S., a then-eighth grader, spoke in the public comment period about his Washington DC eighth-grade trip. That made it into the Tap to Wayne newspaper article last year. That eighth-grade trip in May of 2022 did not take place. So I went back to the video and reviewed Dr. Toback's response to Nicholas. Dr. Toback said, quote, "I used to be a middle school principal. I used to teach in those schools, so we had a Boston trip and a Washington DC trip. I know how important it is to students and so do all the principals and staff members." He went on to say, "We've attempted to put together a trip for students, but unfortunately, the part we feel will be a problem for most parents is if there was a reason to cancel the trip, parents would not get the money back." And he was talking about the bus companies. He then went on to say, "If times change or if options are available, then certainly we will look at those as soon as we can." Now, that was a year ago. And as Dr. Toback anticipated, times have changed. Thanks to your hard work, Dr. Toback, and that of this administration and the efforts of this board, it has sort of, kind of, returned to a normal school year. This could not have been done without the help of the Wayne teachers.
This could not have been done without the help of the Wayne teachers and the efforts and the patience of the Wayne students and their parents. So I'm not so sure why my son and all of his classmates had to hear recently at their middle school assembly that there will not be a Washington DC trip this coming May 2023. Was this issue discussed in an educational committee meeting prior to today, when Ms. Kumar provided an update about this week's meeting? Was an update of the Washington DC trip provided by administration at a prior Board of Ed meeting? Did the 2023 Washington DC topic ever even make it to the agenda for this board to consider? All good questions and points, but rather than getting into the weeds of all that, I'd like to look at the big picture. Eighth grade trips provide educational value. They're enriching, they're memorable for all involved. The last time you had an eighth grade trip was in 2019. The trip was canceled in 2021, 2020, 2021, and 2022 for various reasons. But we're now in 2023 for this trip. The Wayne football teams have traveled to Tennessee and to Atlantic City. The eighth grade students deserve their trip too. And let me remind you that the 2023 eighth graders are the same 2020 fifth graders who lost their in-person fifth grade graduations. Bus companies are now eager to run eighth grade trips. And while COVID is still not completely gone and winter is soon approaching, the eighth grade trip is a May trip. Is the risk of the district having to cancel a trip in May still a concern? Can't we encourage and identify 20 teachers that are willing to help with an eighth grade trip? Can't we plan for the possibility that some students may opt out of the trip without causing all the other eighth graders to miss out on their trip? I made a quick phone call today to one student tour company, and then followed up with four school districts. I learned that the Wood Street has two middle school buses going to Washington DC this spring. I learned that Ridgewood has four buses and 200 middle school students going to Washington. It is spring, just like they went in May of 2022. I learned that Glen Rock Middle School has four buses of 175 students going on their spring 2023 trip. And I learned that Chatham School District has 325 students traveling on seven buses for their May 2023 trip, just like they did in May 2022. I will end where I began. Dr. Toback, you were correct when you told Nicholas one year ago of the importance of eighth grade trips. I agree with you. So I respectfully ask administration, the educational committee, and this board to please roll up your sleeves, figure it all out, address all the details, and make it happen. Make it happen safely and expeditiously, because times have changed. And the Wayne eighth graders deserve to have their eighth grade trip back in May 2023. Thank you.
Cindy Simon, Wayne. I'm not going to speak as eloquently as she just did on the eighth grade trip, but I did ask about it, I think in September, maybe August. Probably September, because I think my son had said they weren't going to do it. And the response I got back was, "We're going to look into it." I know you still have time to organize it, as somebody who's organized many things last minute. You have way more than enough time to organize it, number one. Number two, I understand your concerned parents might not want to do it. Here's a novel idea. How about ask the eighth grade parents? Because we haven't been asked. Ask us if we want to do it. Ask us if we're concerned about the bus fee. Now for the actual other thing I came up to speak about. I saw a policy on the agenda tonight that encourages parental involvement. I think that's awesome. I realize the federal government requires it, but I still think it's awesome. In the last about two, three weeks, twice, the high school has scheduled events in such a way that has discouraged parental involvement. The first was a senior thing about financial aid that was held the same night as Anthony Wayne's back-to-school night. The second, oh no, I take it back. The first was the senior, all-important senior date list for college applications, et cetera. That was held Anthony Wayne. The financial aid thing was held Tuesday night. I was at Col Nidra, sort of paying attention to what the rabbi was saying. This has got to stop. There's got to be a policy or a procedure or something so that you don't have the high schools and middle schools and feeding elementary schools scheduling things that parents need to or want to go to on the same night as best that can be avoided. And you certainly shouldn't be scheduling things on the most religious holiday of the year, you know, in a religion. And I understand the person who did that didn't know Jewish holidays start at night. But come on, this is 2022. Someone should have told them. So, you know, please understand, we don't have, you know, there are families that have only one parent. There are families that have parents that work late. There are families that have three kids, one in each school. Try as best as you can to coordinate these things so you don't have these kinds of conflicts. So parents aren't choosing between which meetings to attend, which kids' concerts to attend, et cetera. And please respect everybody's holidays.
Deanna Gaver, Ten, Glen Rock, Two Road. Good evening. I'm Deanna Gaver, Wayne Hills High School senior. And today, I'm representing the Human Rights Watch Student Task Force team. Here I have with me...
My name is Yuna, I'm a senior at Hills.
Yara Shovla, senior at Hills as well.
Okay, so just to offer some background on who we are. The Student Task Force is part of a larger national organization called the Human Rights Watch. We're actually the first chapter in New Jersey. And basically, every single year, we have a new topic, and it kind of encourages students to advocate in their communities about topics they're passionate about and to make change around them. So this year's campaign is to advocate for 100% renewable energy in school districts as well as general environmental awareness. One thing that we have been working towards recently has been creating an energy dashboard, which would basically make the town and the public more aware of our energy usage so we can find out where there's flaws and where we can fix it to go towards a more green future. We would like to thank our principal, Mr. Ruiwicke, for meeting with us last year and our kind of support, as well as Dr. Toback for everything that you guys have helped us with last year. And we just wanted to come to remind you guys that we haven't forgotten about our cause and we haven't kind of given up and that we are still looking forward to working more with the district and having these discussions with the facilities department to get these statistics on the energy usage. And yeah, thank you for your time tonight. We'd be happy to email the Board of Education our full slideshow and hope to get on the official Board of Education agenda soon.
Hiding is the right word. Stacy Shear, Wayne resident. Two things. One, I am much in favor of the eighth grade trip. I realize that there are, there could be restrictions that need to be looked into. I do want to clarify that Wayne Hills football trips have nothing to do with an eighth grade trip. So I'm not sure where the comparison even comes into play, because Wayne Hills football team, their parents take them. So I'm not really sure how that compares. I also wanted to make a comment. Yesterday was actually World Teachers Day. And I noticed that this town, along with society at this point, is very quick to jump to Facebook and social media when they want to complain about their teachers. Yet, myself, I probably saw maybe two people acknowledge the fact that it was World Teachers Day. And I want to personally thank all the teachers and administration and staff in Wayne, because this is absolutely the hardest time of the year. It's getting yourself set up, learning your kids' names, learning who they are, getting to know them, along with having an assessment every other day so that we can track them and see where they need to be. So I just want to take a minute to say to all the teachers in the country and the world, but especially our Wayne teachers, thank you so much for everything you do every day. And my advice is to stay off social media, because you're doing a fabulous job, whether people admit it or not. Thank you.
Jennifer Lee in Forty Eight Terrace Road. I just wanted to put a question out in terms of what we saw on the line items for the referendum. And I guess two of the things that were a little bit dismaying to me were the... There was a comment made that we're not really doing any additions on our school buildings. And then also, the comment was made that we really aren't doing additions on the school buildings if we're going to be getting aid unless we are somewhat overcrowded. So I've worked in a district that is always overcrowded. I kind of feel like it does a disservice to our students. Putting aids in a classroom to help out with an overcrowded class is not a great solution at all. And it just made me upset to hear that really the only way that we're going to get to a point where we get an addition on a school building is if we overcrow our classrooms, which we know it's coming. So I was just wondering, are there any other ideas that might have been floated around that could address that? And then the other one is, you know, I saw these great plans for an updated science lab, which was awesome, talking about getting back some of the sports programs. But before we do that, is there any way for us to look at, even if it's by school building by school building, to work on possibly getting the age back updated? I know this comes up all the time, but I can't tell you how many times in the 14 years that I've been teaching, it becomes impossible, especially when testing comes, to try to encourage children to give their best on state tests when we can't even think straight because it's so hot in these classrooms. I was just in James Fallon School for an awesome back-to-school night. It's a beautiful building. The one thing that stood out while I was sitting in the gym, even though that does, from my understanding, have air conditioning, was wow, it's really warm in here. So I know that this might not be an immediate thing that we can attend to. I realize that this school district has so many buildings. But if there is a way for us to start chipping away at this and putting money in as a taxpayer, I would love to see these things on a referendum, maybe over some of the other things first. Thank you for your time.
No?
Hello. Yara Shovla, Hills Senior, Eighty-Nine Traffic and Road, Wayne, New Jersey. So I know on the agenda, there was a point about a student representative on the board. I know we kind of skipped around, so I just wanted to ask again if we could cover that and exactly what the application entails and just like details about that. So I just wanted to bring that up again, because that's something like, I know me and a couple other people might be interested in. So just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Sign no one, Madam President? Move to close.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, here we are. Old business, comments, Dr. Toback.
So most of what was said this evening were comments that certainly will be considered. Ms. Layton asked a question about the referendum. So referendum that you're hearing about tonight is really, it's where we are right now. And it's kind of a follow-up to many discussions that took place last year. The referendum does include HBA C improvements, but it does not include, as Mr. Moffett said previously, the air conditioning. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that the air conditioning and the foundation to have the electrical work is a very expensive undertaking. So I think that we basically indicated before that to really upgrade all of our buildings, to have central air across the district, would be in the neighborhood of about $50 million, which that occupies...
A stated number of about a year or two ago.
So a year or two ago is the estimated cost of a project. So that is a substantial project. The district does chip away, and we have been chipping away for many years. So if you were to ask many of the teachers, they can go around the district and point out to all of our media centers now have air conditioning. That was not always the case. There are different parts of the building, so we have been chipping away at it. But it's not where we'd like to be, and it's certainly not 100% central air. There's a lot of units, there's a whole bunch of things that are out there. But it's not, like I said, it is a very expensive proposition the board would have to take under consideration as we continue to talk about what projects we'll have at the end when we actually propose a finished product to the public. So the other issue is, okay, how do we address the issue of overcrowded classrooms? So that answer came in part, although it's hard to understand a little bit. So there was a discussion about unhoused students. And there was a discussion about a new demographic study. So that goes hand in hand. So the way to really start moving ahead with construction in a situation, once you know that you have unhoused students or you project that you will have unhoused students, under those circumstances, then you would receive aid for those projects. And so if you have a new demographic study, and at a prior meeting, I talked about the fact that our kindergarten and first grade enrollment are much higher than maybe what was anticipated with the original demographic study. Those numbers are your base numbers. And so if you take the kindergarten and first grade and you move that ahead for the next 10, 12 years, there's a much higher enrollment. So we suspect that the next demographic study, based on that bit of information, that our base numbers are much bigger, that is going to show a significant difference when it comes to our final numbers. And then we might have unhoused students, and that allows us to really take additional action. Once, so there's a whole system that's set up by the state determining how aid is allocated for these projects, and unhoused students is part of it. So we'll know more about that in a year. So we have this process going on. And so some of the things that you're talking about are not out of the realm of consideration for the board. That's really my main point. So as far as Mr. Tempezku. So I know that you did do a nice job speaking on the Washington DC trip. And we certainly, we do appreciate your concerns. It is something that ultimately the district has looked at. We have come across a number of concerns that we do have. And so I think what makes sense now is to really, to start communicating to our parent community about why those concerns are out there and what it is that we will do as the next part of our process. In other words, in the prior year, we did have a replacement trip. We do have some other options that are out there that we are looking at. What we do with the Washington trip, you know, that's still not finalized. And what we do if there is like a replacement trip or something else that we do. That's all, that has yet to be communicated to the parent community. And I understand your concerns, it is getting late in the air. So we're going to look at that. It was discussed tonight in committee, and it's something... You understand that when we're talking about a trip to Washington, those are also things that are usually, a contract for that would be negotiated in the prior spring. And so, but at this point, we also don't have any proposals from our principals. So they're also looking at the feasibility of running these trips. So yes, there may be some other districts. I mean, ultimately, it's very easy to find other districts that might be doing something. But that doesn't mean necessarily that's the right thing for us to do here. So we are looking, and we do understand that you obviously have some concerns. I'm sure many other parents also have concerns. I'd like to see that the Washington DC trip has been kind of like this rite of passage trip for our students, and we do understand that. For our students that came from Wayne Hills. So Deanna and Yuna, so I remember from last year. So we did have a nice discussion, and we do appreciate, and we would, I'm sure the board would be very happy to hear, you did have a very good presentation, a very thorough presentation about some of the topics that you raised. And last year, I did mention that it's also a really good time to have some of the discussion about energy efficiency and some of the things we can do, because it goes hand in hand with what the board was talking about earlier, which is this referendum and some possible projects we can move ahead with. So for example, some of the energy efficiency projects that weren't really billed as energy efficiency projects are. So previously, the board talked about the impact that roofs have on buildings and how that reduces energy use. We talked about windows and how, we didn't talk tonight about that, but we did talk previously about how new windows will dramatically reduce energy use, considering that most of our windows, window, I can't say it, windows are about 50 years old. And many of our windows are single-painted, very inefficient. So there are things that the board is doing, and perhaps that wasn't highlighted tonight, that the projects that we are doing will have the effect of reducing our energy consumption and reducing our carbon footprint.
Thank you. Board members, old business?
I saw a new business, sorry.
All right. New business, Mrs. Kumar.
Yeah, more of a comment, but I did want to say that we are all actively working on the eighth grade trip situation. We all really just want the students to have a great time, more than anything else. And I wanted to thank the students for coming to speak at a board meeting, because it's hard to do that. So I just wanted to thank them for coming. And I just look forward to hearing more from all of you about the different things we're proposing. And yes, the referendum things are still under discussion. Got it.
Any other question, Mark?
Did you have your guy?
Let's see, go ahead first.
Mrs. Sam?
Okay, I just want to address the, well, first of all, Happy Teachers Day. We didn't forget you. At least I didn't. That's what the end of the meeting is about. I want to say that if by nine years on the board, air conditioning comes up every year. It's been hashed, rehashed, and hashed again. But not because we don't want to do it. But as we just talked about 50-year-old windows, everything in our buildings are 50 years old. The stuff that's on the referendum, the priority projects, we can't put in air conditioning if our electrical systems are old, our ductwork is old, our plumbing is old. These things need to be addressed first, because look at an air conditioner. If you plug it in, and the whole building loses power because the grid can't handle it. And that's basically what we're trying to lead up to in the work we're doing through capital and maintenance and the work we're going to attempt to do through the referendum, which obviously is not carved in stone as to whether that will be building improvements or building additions. I thought, Dr. Toback, we were considering changing the location of some of the kindergartens to alleviate some of the overcrowding in our elementary schools. But is that no longer a topic? Or you want to talk about that later? I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'd say that's probably...
A later topic? Okay, but there's things that are being floated. I'll leave it at that. I don't want to freak anybody out that your kid is moving to a different school. Calm down, sorry. I know how nerve-wracking that can be. And yeah, I'm sure we'll come up with a solution. But Mr. Tempezku, I don't know, I don't know where you got the impression that it's about busing. It's not just about busing. It's about the excursions, it's about the chaperones, it's about the hotels, it's about everything that a travel agent does. And then it's about guaranteeing the trip with insurance. That's what happened the last time. Some people took the insurance out, some people didn't. There was this big brouhaha over who was going to get a refund, who wasn't. It was a nightmare. So I mean, I'm sure parents learn their lessons and will take out insurance, because it clearly is something that's necessary. But again, I don't know if anyone will give us pandemic insurance. Should there be another outbreak and the hotels cancel? Or the, you know, bus companies is just one small part of it, quite frankly. But I just wanted to put that out there for you, sir. That's it?
If I may, I'm not trying to be a white guy. I just need to pull something up on my cellphone. I'm not texting. No, seriously.
I see an over request in your future. No, just kidding.
So I just wanted to say, also reiterate, Happy World Teachers Day. A big shout out to the Randall Carter staff that I see in the audience and all the other teachers in the audience and those that are listening on YouTube. So I also wanted to say, acknowledge that it's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I also wanted to acknowledge that October is Substance Abuse Prevention Month. I also wanted to acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month is wrapping up on the 15th. And it's also Italian Heritage Month. But anyway, thank you to the Human Rights Watch Student Task Force that attended tonight. I think it was nice and coincidental that you were here for the referendum so you could see that we are trying to do some efficient items for the district. And yeah, I think if we can get those, that communication out there about the DC trip for the eighth grade parents. My son, my oldest son missed out on the eighth grade trip. And when I went to back-to-school at GW, it's clear that you're missing that 2020, 2021 Washington DC trip among all the other pictures up there. So if we can address the parental concerns and perhaps do a survey among the staff and the parents to see, you know, what kind of interest is out there, I think that would be great. And that's it.
Any other question, Mark? Thank you. I think every day should be Teacher Appreciation Day myself. I know that our administration will work very, very hard to come up with a plan for our eighth graders. I know how disappointed many of them are about going back, about missing their eighth grade trip. I don't know if we'll be able to present an eighth grade trip in the format that children had an opportunity to experience several years ago. But I know that our administration will work very, very hard to come up with a wonderful experience for our eighth graders. Lastly, after having toured buildings, I'm really disappointed about what our architectural people had to say tonight and what's available through the state. Because, I'm sorry, we have elementary buildings where it's a shame that they do not have a standalone gym for their students. I'm also concerned about class sizes. Came very, very close this year to trying to figure out if we got one more student in some of the classes on the elementary level, what we're going to do in a building. So that has to be addressed. I know the administration, including our business administrator, the architectural firm, our facilities people are working really, really hard on that. And we're painfully aware of where the problems are. I think you also have to stop and look at history in Wayne. We had security and safety referendums that didn't pass. All-day kindergarten didn't pass twice. If it had not been for our administration and our, for your business office, we never would have gotten full-day kindergarten. They figured out a way to make it work. We figured out a way, chipping at it, month after month, year after year, how to get the safety and security component there for our children. Everyone was excited when we decided to put an SRO, not really an SRO, a Class Three Officer in every single building. And we're funding that, and we're happy to do it, because nothing is more precious. But it's really difficult, given the track record in town, to go full out and say, yeah, we're going to build four gyms and make two giant enhancements to our stadiums that everybody uses, knowing that we'll be lucky we get repair stuff. I'm sorry, that's the way I look at it. And if the community can convince us that we'll get the fiscal support from you, then we would have no trouble moving ahead. So we'll continue to do the best that we can. You can see, there's Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. That we'll do as much as we can. If we can get more support, we'll go beyond. And that's just the situation as it is right now. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.